Okay, good morning, everybody. I'm Derwood Parkinson. I'm serving as moderator today. We're going to conduct business using the main rules of parliamentary, main moderators' rules and a couple housekeeping items to start. One is you're welcome to speak once a motion's been made and seconded. Come forward, use the microphone, identify yourself and your address, and you'll be heard, one at a time. I'll call you forward when you raise your hand. Secondly, another housekeeping matter is for us to have a vote authorizing nonresidents to speak. And what I mean by nonresidents is usually members of the staff who do not live in Kenny bunk court. They may need to, or you may want them to weigh in on particular issues. So does somebody want to make a motion to allow nonresidents to speak? Thank you. Is there a, motion's been made and seconded to allow nonresidents to speak at this town meeting? Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by raising your blue cards. Thank you. All opposed? The motion is passed. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to move forward with Article 5. And you all have the information in front of you. Hopefully, you've had the opportunity to review it and think about it. And Article 5 is to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for general government program expenses. And the amount requested is $2,313.
Don't we need to start with Article 2?
Hold on here. I thought we voted on referendum.
The referendum we voted on. But it's.
That's the rain. Hold on. Okay. All right. Okay, we're going to get this straightened out. Okay, I'm sorry. I was going straight to the money articles. Let's start with Article 2. To see if the town will approve the following: authorizing the treasurer with advice and approval of the municipal officers to sell and dispose of real estate; B, to authorize the town treasurer with the advice and approval of the municipal officers to waive and foreclose on any tax lien mortgage; C, to make any and all property taxes due and payable upon presentation of bills; D, to set the interest rate; and E, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to enter into a standard agreement with the taxpayers, establishing a tax club. Everybody see Article 2? Is there a motion to approve Article 2?
Mr. Moderator, I move to accept Article 2 as written.
I second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 2. Is there discussion on Article 2? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 2, signify by raising your cards. Thank you very much. All opposed? Article 2 is passed. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to approve the following: to authorize a selectman to pay for abatements and applicable interest granted during the fiscal year 2023-2024 from overlay; authorize, B, authorize a selectman to apply, accept, and expend from the following categories of funds. Okay. C, to authorize a selectman to carry forward unencumbered surplus. Is there a motion to approve Article 3?
Mr. Moderator, I move to accept Article 3 as written.
I second it.
Okay, Article 3 has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 3? All in favor of Article 3? All opposed? Article 3 is passed. Okay. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to approve the following: A, to authorize the tax collector, the tax collector or treasurer, to accept prepayments of taxes not yet committed; B, to authorize a selectman to accept easement deeds; C, to authorize a selectman to accept unconditional and conditional gifts of money or property. I'm briefly summarizing these, as you can see. So is there a motion to approve Article 4?
Mr. Moderator, I move to accept Article 4 as written.
I second.
All right, any discussion on Article 4? All in favor of Article 4? All opposed? Article 4 is passed. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to move on to the money items there. Article 5, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for general government program expenses. Is there a motion to approve Article 5?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $2,313,526 for general government program expenses.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 5 with the amount requested at $2,313,526. Motion's been made and seconded on Article 5. Discussion on Article 5?
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend Article 5 and add $17,118 to make the overall total $2,330,644, which will bring the overall increase up to $138,001.
Okay, there's a motion to amend it, so we're going to first vote on the motion to amend, and if that passes, we'll vote on the motion as amended. If it fails, we'll go back to the original. Is there a seconder?
I think she wants to know why.
Okay. Hold on, let's just get a seconder on, has it been seconded? Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to amend Article 5 to increase the amount, as I understand it, Mr. Briggs, by thirty, from $17,000.
Thirty-four thousand.
The compensation, increase it to a number of $34,236. Do you want to explain your?
Right, I wish to let everyone know that I believe this is a needed adjustment to the selectman's salary. You know, we have good people working for the town, and we give them an annual increase of 3%. If you're making forty or fifty thousand dollars a year, 3% is a significant amount of money. But if your salary for the year is $3,300, 3% of that is so small, it doesn't hardly show up. And over time, because of the disparity of salary base, this gets wider and wider and wider apart. So this is my proposal to make this amendment to the Article 5 to try and help correct this problem.
Okay, okay, the motion has, thank you, Mr. Briggs, if you would. A motion has been made and seconded to amend Article 5 to increase the Select Board's salary to a total of $34,236, as opposed to the Budget Committee's recommendation and Board of Selectmen's recommendation of $17,118. It therefore increases the amount requested from $2,313,526 to $2,330,644. I just want to make sure everybody's clear on the numbers. Anybody else want to be heard on the amendment? Sir, you want to come forward and tell us? Thank you. Say your name and.
My name is Bill Dugan. I live at 14 Whitemore Lane. I first heard about this initiative a day ago, and I asked, when was the last time the selectman stipend was raised? And nobody knew the answer. We have some long-serving people on here, and nobody knows when it was raised the last time. I also asked, when the selectman said, well, how much work do you do? How much time does it take to be a selectman? He said, typically, it's about 20 hours a week. There's, you have to prepare for meetings, be at the meetings, a lot of phone calls. In a busy week, if there's a.
Can you move a little closer to the microphone?
Sure. If there's a busy week, and there's a lot of, if there's a contentious issue, probably 30 hours a week. It's not an easy job. Having said all that, if you look at the town, there's a lot of, I think it's a very well-run town. We see property values rising. We see a lot of new construction in town. People want to move here. And over and above that, we have the lowest mill rate in the state. All signs to me of a very well-run town, very much for this initiative.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments on the amendment? If you'd come forward, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mary Beth Gilbert. So I recently was on the Budget Board, and I just want to bring attention to the town, the people of the town, of the process that was gone through for the Budget Board, for the budget for this year, with the Select Board, with the town managers, with all the directors of the departments, and with the Budget Board itself. So there are increases that all the directors brought forward for their people, for increases for salary. There was increases put into the budget for salaries that had to be updated to attract the right talent into the different groups. So that's already incorporated into the current budget. As far as, you know, going for a raise for the Select Board itself, I think that would be something that we would want to put in next year's budget if we so true chose, so that it could go through the full due diligence of the process. In campaigning for the Budget Board or for the Select Board, I just want to bring some voices to the microphone that I heard on knocking on doors. And I've heard this many times from many people, the opposite, saying that this is a very affluent town, that the mill rate is low, that people are doing basically great. What I've heard from a number of people is that's not the case. There's a lot of people just trying to get by. So I just want to do due diligence whenever we talk about money, anything that we relate to taxes, and make sure that something can be fully vetted, you know, through the process that the town currently has. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments on the amendment?
Yep.
Sir, come forward.
I'm Dan Beard, and I have a question for any one of you. If you figured out your pay per hour on the job that you do on a normal, call it 20-hour a week, what are you getting over the course of a year?
Well, Dan, of course, the answer is, we don't do this for the money.
I agree with that, but what's it really boiled down to?
I don't know.
When you put your time in? I was on the school board for six years, years ago. I have an idea of what you're dealing with. But realistically, what's it paying you to give the service to the town that you, as a group, do?
It pays my property taxes. That was, that's about it, but I'm sure for the others, that's probably not the case. That's about it.
You're better off than a lot of.
That's about it. But again, one of the things that's happened, and, you know, I probably will vote for this, but as you all know, I'm leaving the Board, so, you know, I don't have a dog in this hunt, if you will, anymore. But one of the reasons that I chose to leave the Board was that I couldn't keep up with the work anymore. I'm self-employed, I'm a lobsterman, if you don't know. You know, it's a very time-consuming operation. You know, I spend as much time on land, working on things, as I do hauling my traps. And at the end of the day, I couldn't keep up with it, so I chose to leave. So it's a lot of work. It isn't, you know, and I think Mary Beth understands that, and I wish to congratulate her on her victory. And, you know, but nobody does it for the money. So this is a make yourself feel good kind of thing here. Nobody's going to quit because they got the same salary, and I would have, if I had the time, I would have run, and I would have done it for free. One of the things that nobody knows, and I'm going to bring this out in the public, is during the pandemic, you know, at the early, early days, we were all scared as hell, every one of us, and don't lie and say you weren't. You know, we didn't know what would happen. I remember asking the chief if we had enough ammunition, just in case things really went bad. I mean, worst-case scenario. I mean, that's the Stephen King novel reader in me. But one of the things that we thought was we might have to cut employee salaries, it's something that was discussed. And one of the things that we all agreed as a Board is that if we had to cut them 1%, we would all go with no salary for the year, because we wanted to show solidarity. So this is a make-you-feel-good thing. You know, vote for it because you want to make, you believe in the selectmen, or don't vote for it. It won't make any difference to the four members who are going to be here behind me.
Okay.
But I appreciate the gesture, and it is one of the things that I've often thought about. If you did it for the money, you'd go broke.
Well, speaking as one of the four members that will be here, I very much appreciate the sentiment of the town that I've heard in terms of increasing the pay, but I would strongly support Ms. Gilbert's contention that there is due process, and this is something that I would, I will vote against now, simply in the hope that it would be brought through the normal procedure. And I would want anyone who voted against it to know that that would be my assumption of the reason, and nothing but that.
Further comments, sir?
Yeah, hi, my name's David James. To put this, I know that you guys don't, haven't volunteered for this job because of the money. You do it because.
David, can you just move a little closer? The rain is drowning.
You want, you do it because you want to support the town, the people that live here, and make it a wonderful place to live. But just for the fun of it, I went through and calculated, what are you making per hour? And, you know, it's debatable as to many, how many hours a month you may spend. We know there's two, two meetings a month, and there are always at least two hours, so there's four hours a month right there. But all the off-time things that you do. So I went through, and with the current budget, let's assume that you're spending 20 hours a month on town things. That boils down, with the current budget, to $7.14 an hour. Okay, we increased the budget by up to $34,236. 20 hours a month now becomes $14.25. So you're still not really meeting minimum wage requirements. It makes hardly any difference whatsoever to the tax mill rate. I don't know, maybe a half a cent or something like that. I didn't see the exact calculation.
Well, to put it in perspective, they're paying $17.95 to start at Dairy Queen in Kennybunk. I saw the sign at the drive-thru yesterday.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, anyway, I strongly support this as a move. I went back and looked at the 2010 annual report, and it was a little over $12,000 budget compared to $17,000 today, so went 13 years, it's moved from $12,000 to $17,000. That's hardly keeping up with the rate of inflation. Thank you.
Thank you. I see a comment. You want to come forward, sir?
I'm Jim Stockman, for Woodlawn Avenue. I'd like to just call the question.
Okay, we're going to have, the motion has been made to call the question. Is there a second on that?
Second.
It's not debatable. All in favor of calling the question, signify by raising your cards. Okay, all opposed? Okay, so we're going to now vote on the amendment. If the amendment passes, then we'll vote on the article as amended. It's a two-step process. If the amendment fails, then we'll just vote on the article as originally written, unless somebody makes another amendment. Okay, so seeing no further discussion, and the question has been moved to vote, all in favor of Article 5 as written, signify by raising your cards.
As amended.
As amended, I'm sorry. All in favor of Article 5 as amended? And everybody knows what the amendment is, the additional funds, signify by raising your cards. Okay. Thank you. All opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take this. Raise your cards, all in favor. Yeah, yeah, all in favor of the amendment, raise your hands. Of the amendment. It's too close to, I need the clerk's help on the count here. All in favor of the amendment, keep your hands up. And in a second or last, all are opposed. It's very close. Maybe it's not as close as I think, but we'll find out in a second. Everybody understands that we're voting on the amendment, right? 30? Okay. Okay. All opposed to the amendment?
Mr. Moderator, we have people voting twice.
I'm sorry?
That woman there has held her card up for both the divisions.
You can only vote one time. Okay, I want to be super clear. We're voting on the amendment, whether to increase the salary of the selectman. If you're in favor of that, raise your hand. If you're not in favor of it, raise your hand when I say, if you're opposed. Okay, thank you for, okay, all those opposed, go ahead and raise your hands again. Thank you for. I could call for a written ballot, but. Okay, the vote is 30 in favor of the amendment and 24 oppose the amendment. So now, we're going to go forward and vote on the article as amended. Everybody with me? Okay, it sounds, it sounds crazy, but I think this is the right way to do it. So any further discussion on the article as amended? Seeing none, all in favor of the article as amended, signify by raising your hands. Okay, let's do the vote. It'll probably be the same number, but you never know. All those opposed to the article as amended, raise your hand. Okay, thank you. The vote is 35 in favor of the article as amended, 12 oppose. The article as amended is passed. Article 5 as amended is passed. Thank you very much for that. Moving right along to Article 6, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for public safety program expenses. The amount requested on that is $3,389,796. Is there a motion to approve Article 6?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the $3,389,796 for public safety program expenses.
Okay, so you've moved to, that the town raise and appropriate the amount requested. Okay, that motion's been made and seconded to approve Article 6 with that figure. Is there discussion on Article 6? Don't be bashful. Okay, seeing no discussion, Article, all is in favor of the passage of Article 6 at the amount requested, signify by raising your blue cards. Thank you very much. Any opposed? Okay, Article 6 passes at the amount requested. Article 7, to see what sum the town will vote and raise to appropriate for health and welfare program expenses. The amount requested is $827,319. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $827,319 for health and welfare program expenses.
Okay, the motion, the motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 7 at the amount requested. Is there discussion on Article 7? Any comments, questions, anything? Okay, all in favor of Article 7 at the amount requested? Thank you. All opposed? Article 7 passes. Article 8, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the public works program expenses. The amount requested is $1,561,060. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,561,060 for public works program expenses.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Article 8 at the amount requested. Is there a discussion on Article 8? Questions, anything on Article 8? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 8? Thank you. Any opposed? Article 8 passes. Okay, getting some momentum here. Article 9, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for recreation, culture, contingency, and miscellaneous program expenses. The amount requested is $680,214. Motion on Article 9?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $680,214 for recreation, culture, contingency, and miscellaneous program expenses.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve Article 9 at the amount requested. Discussion on Article 9? Seeing none, all in favor of Article 9, signify by raising your blue cards. Thank you. All opposed? Article 9 is passed. Okay, Article 10, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for capital expense and reserve account and debt service payments. The amount requested is $3,557,280. Is there a motion to approve Article 10?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,557,280 for capital expense and reserve account and debt service payments.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve Article 10 at the requested amount. Discussion on Article 10? Please come forward, say your name, and make your comments.
Robin Phillips. I just have a question. I don't know if there's more detail in these budget booklets, but the special projects, the miscellaneous, $285,000, you know, it's gone up 250,000. I have a general idea of what that is for.
Does anybody want to take that? Special projects, miscellaneous?
It's up at the top under special projects.
Oh, under administration? No.
No, no, page 19.
On page 19?
Special projects.
Oh, the 535,000 total?
It says miscellaneous, 285.
It was 285 last year, this year, 535.
Going up 250.
So what is that for?
So that includes the purchase of automated bins for waste collection. It includes replacement of light fixtures for the streetlights. And then, lastly, it includes a design to deal with Ocean Avenue flooding. So to look at what we need to do to improve the drainage and height of the road on Ocean Avenue by Wannabe Beach.
Okay, and another question I have on this article is the Village Parcel Principle, like, so we're paying more now? Is that what that is?
Could you just come a little closer and rephrase that?
I'm just wondering, I'm looking at the Village Parcel, we have chosen to pay more, or is it just the way the loan?
It's just the way the payments are. So the Village Parcel payments are laid out in our debt service schedule, and that's just what the payment would be this year.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments, questions? Okay.
We have one from the audience.
Oh, if you could come forward again.
I'd just like to add a little color to Robin's question, just for the people here today that may have not went through the Budget Committee with the Select Board and Lori and the town. So one of the biggest things that we grappled with for the budget when we looked at some of the big hitters to increase was this purchase of the garbage bins, which is a required thing that we need to do, because it's an automated process that we have to go through. So I think, under the guidance of our chairperson on the Budget Board, we had great conversations with the Select Board. In efforts to keep the mill rate down as best as possible, the Select Board went back with the town manager, came back with different ways to increase revenue, so that we could keep the budget that you see here and fund the stuff that we needed to. And they also did come back with a way to fund, or Lori did, a way to fund the expense of coming up with these bins, which was a lease versus the one-time payment. The one-time payment is what's in here, and that was voted on by both the Select Board and the Budget Board. And both Boards, there were some, you know, it was a 3-2 vote. it was a 3-2 vote on the Select Board, and it was two people voted against it on the Budget Board. So I just wanted to bring that to color because it was something big, but there was a lot of due diligence done by both boards.
Thank you. Any further, further comments, questions on Article X? Okay. We'll call for a vote now. All in favor of Article X signify by raising your blue cards. Thank you. All opposed? Article X is, is passed as requested. Okay. Now we're going to move on to Article XI, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $3,705,979 from estimated non-property tax revenues, $200,000 from undesignated fund balance, and $600,000 from capital projects reserve account to reduce the property tax commitment. Is there a motion to approve Article XI?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $3,705,979 from estimated non-property tax revenues, $200,000 from the undesignated fund balance, and $600,000 from capital projects reserve account to reduce the property tax commitment.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve Article XI. Discussion on Article XI. Please come forward, say your name again.
Robin Phillips. This is just, I see at the end of this sheet, there's, um, sale of town property for $20,000. What is that sale?
The sale would be equipment. As we replace equipment, we'll sell the old equipment, and that will become a revenue.
So property doesn't mean--
Not, not real estate property, just equipment property.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions, comments on Article XI? Okay, pretty good. All in favor of Article XI signify by raising your blue cards. Thank you. All opposed? Article XI is passed. Last but not least, Article XII. To see if the town will vote to ratify the selectmen's acceptance of a gift of a new 25-26-supped-in-monarch pumper with a 1,500-gallon-per-minute pump and a $1,000, $1,000-gallon water tank. The truck is equipped with foam system and a 30-gallon foam cell. I don't think I need to read all that. You can get all the statistics and details about the equipment by reading what's in front of you. So is there a motion to approve Article XII?
Mr. Moderator, I move to accept Article XII as written.
Okay. I'll second.
Thank you very much. A motion's been made and seconded to approve Article XII as written. Is there a discussion on Article XII? Last chance. Good. Seeing none, all in favor of Article XII? Thank you very much. All opposed? Article XII is, is approved, passed. Thank you so much for working through all, all of these. I think there's some more things that are going to happen, right, Tracy?
All right. Thank you, David. Could I have the Board of Selectmen and Laurie please join me at the podium? Yeah, watch the chords. All right. All right. Is my microphone on? I don't really need one. Testing? There we go. All right. At this time, we'd like to present the Spirit of America Award. So could I have Kai Lefler please join me at the podium? Thank you, Kai. The Spirit of America Award is presented to local individuals, organizations, and projects for commendable community service. It celebrates the spirit of giving back to our community through volunteerism. A perfect example of this spirit is found in Kai Lefler. Kai, or Catherine, Lefler, is well-known for her deep commitment to her community. In addition to her busy schedule as a Realtor for Coldwell Banker, she and her husband, Bill, are deeply passionate about supporting and giving back to their community. She has served on the Budget Board since 2009 and was a longtime member of the Shade Tree Committee from 1998 to 2015, a cause that she truly loved and was devoted to during her many years on that committee. Kai does not just serve on these committees, but brings the same passion and drive that makes her successful in her professional efforts. While serving on the Budget Board, she was part of a subcommittee to create a new application form for nonprofits and a new process for the town to use to determine which groups they will contribute to. In addition to her civic contributions, she is also a member of the Kennebunk Portside Rotary Club, living by their motto, "Service Above Self." The Kennebunk Port Board of Selectmen would like to recognize Kai Lefler with the 2023 Spirit of America Award, signed this day, 17 June 2023, by the Kennebunk Port Board of Selectmen.
Kai, Kai wants to go singing in the rain. That's a beautiful sentiment, sentiment. Okay, last but not least, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. All opposed? Thank you very much for excellent meeting.